Why don't we tell them how it's been? Yeah.
I think that's what they're not thinking about.
But if you say, "I'm not going to talk," you can't be talking to me.
We talked about it for a minute.
I don't think it's very hard or anything. They don't.
And we might see now that you're not going to talk.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I got something for you.
You know, a lot of people. There isn't one too old like you did.
Oh.
I know. I thought, "How?" I thought, "How?" You want to watch the house? You know, I put it all out there trying to my... That was much if you didn't have it. This is hard.
I have covered it.
Nineteen thirteen. I'm reading it. Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, no. I sold that. I, yeah.
Oh, it's on, man. I saw it.
Yeah, I, oh, sure. Yeah. Right. So, if you think about that, so, I've done calls. I've done calls. I've done calls. Yeah. Yeah. It didn't work. Yeah. That's your thing. They just want to fall over it. I just want people to know how old I am. I don't even want people to know I'm forty. Nineteen thirteen. Well, I was born thirty-three, so...
I was like, "You're not no two years old." You're not a lot older than that.
One time.
Twenty-nine and holding.
Yeah.
You'll be a hundred and eighteen.
Yeah, tough. Okay. Ready? Call meeting to order of Rick Flecker. Yeah. Yes. In Cedar Springs, where everyone please rise and recite the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and endless law.
I would request that anyone who has a cellphone, if you would mind, put it on mute, or if you do need to receive an emergency call, by all means, leave it so that you may answer up. At this time, roll call vote. Mr. Clark? Here. Mr. Hopkins?
Here.
Mrs. Nixon?
Here.
Mrs. Powell?
Here.
Mr. Truesdale?
Here.
Mrs. Connolly?
Here.
Mr. Hollins here, too. We're all present. Next item will be the public forum. The city council welcomes and encourages the public to speak during the public comment of the public hearing portion of the agenda. However, council's policy is to hear the public comment, not to act on it, act on the public comment at this time. Concerns brought before the council during the public comment portion of the agenda will be referred to the city manager for action. If after communication with the city manager, no resolution is reached, the concern will be elevated to the mayor and then the entire of the city council for action. Those citizens wish to speak on agenda or non-agenda items will be allowed a maximum of four minutes each to address their concerns. This is the only time during the council meeting that citizens will be allowed to address the city council. Please state your name and address for the record. I would like to also implement anyone wishing to sign up that before the meeting that you'll get with the clerk and put your name for the agenda. At this time, is there anyone wishing to speak to the city council?
Betty Truesdale, 141 South Main Street. I'm here tonight on behalf of the community building development team, and I would like to invite Kevin to stand with me here. You all know that Kevin has been raising money to build a pavilion in our park, and we're very proud of him. We just are thankful that we have young people like this that are taking the initiative to do something in our community. What he is doing ties right in with what the community development team is attempting to do. Last meeting, he needed $2,028, I believe, last council meeting. So, our group had voted to make up the difference, but in the meantime, he raised another $1,028. So, I would like to present to you tonight a check for $1,000 on behalf of the community development team, and congratulations, you're there. I'd like to thank you. One more thing, to raise a young man like this, who is an example in our community, that takes a moment, Dad. And I appreciate his mom and dad also, so let's give them a... Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. It's a well-deserved, it's well-deserved, and we will have plenty of good times and picnics in the park and the new pavilion, and we're looking very much forward to the ribbon cutting. Thank you, Kevin, for your hard work and all your hard work gathering this money. I know it's not easy. Thank you. Any other council wishes to speak at that?
Thank you to the community development team for helping to kick in on that. That's really exciting to see that all come together.
It's all community. Okay. Consent agenda.
Oh. Are we still, are you still in the public?
No, we haven't got... Okay, yes.
Okay.
I might get this meeting going, but... Um, the next one, the next will be public hearing. Call right ahead, Mrs. Wolf.
I'm Sue Wolf, 152902, Cedar Springs. Just to kind of keep the news going, I guess, I just wanted to give you a little update on GEDDY. As you know, GEDDY is a nonprofit local organization, and we are focused on, we're dedicated to strengthening the community of Cedar Springs and the surrounding area through the building up of families, and we operate completely on donations. And we have our one and only fundraiser coming up a week from tomorrow, and that is, of course, Friday, March 20th. And just a little, I know you guys probably know this, but in GEDDY provides a free after-school program for sixth through eighth graders, which is, we believe, a very important age. Sometimes these are the kids that might go home and be home alone during that time of the day until parents get home, and we just, you know, want to give them some fun, interesting, safe things to do. It's a very structured time. We have a director, we have homework, we have mentoring times, we have cultural education, we have interaction with local service groups. Our police and our firemen have all been there. And then we also have what we call a fifth quarter, which is geared towards high school students, and we do that like after football games or basketball games or things like that, again, to give them a safe place to be. And then we also do family events, and we showed two movies last year. We packed North, we packed Kent Theater completely two nights. We showed God's Not Dead, and that was free for families. And then we also have had other activities for families that are free. So, I'm not sure how you're in time, but anyway, I just wanted to let you know that things are going well. We, of course, formed in 2009, but again, our community has been wonderful in supporting this, and CS Manufacturing will match everything that we earn at the auction, dollar for dollar. So, last year, we were able to raise enough money to function the whole year, and so, anyway, that's it. So, I...
Can I just leave one of these to each of you?
Okay.
Thank you.
It's a great program. Anyone else wishing to address the council at this time?
Thank you.
This is Ben.
Get the green poolside Maple Cedar Springs. I just wanted to comment on the council members using their own personal email. If a person wants to FOIA those emails, then it would be a lot more difficult, and that would, to me, show a lack of transparency. I think if you watch the news lately, you know how important it is for a public official to use the city's server. And Julie, I didn't quite understand what you said about signing in with Linda. You were requiring a sign-in to speak at the public town?
Well, to speed things up, that way, if we had someone to sign up and make a list of who wanted to speak before us, the school board used to do it, and it kind of sped things up a little bit. Just an idea.
I think that's in violation of you open meetings. I don't think you...
Yeah, well, you giving, recording to give your name is also a violation.
No, they ruled that it wasn't.
Okay. Either way, we'll figure that out, but thanks. Thanks for the word, and we'll look into that.
And I'm not sure why the city has to create, um...
There's a lot of new things.
With the Red Planel Festival. Most festivals are self-sustaining, and since we don't have any option of supplying police force, it's up to the sheriff's department, as I understood the sheriff to say when he was here. And they do their own cleanup and so forth, so I'm not sure that taxpayer money should be used for that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else wishing to address the council at this time? Anyone else? Last call? Okay, moving on. Item number four, public hearing. I believe we have none. Item number five, approval of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the agenda as presented, striking, striking item...
B?
I thought it was like R.
No, A.
Or, I'm sorry.
Nine B. We will be striking item B.
Nine B and adding item R.
Oppose.
Do you need that more specific?
No, I don't.
Okay.
Okay. Any discussion?
You seconded it.
Mr. Hopkins? Although, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Agenda is approved. Consent agenda, number six. Any items here the council member wished to remove or add, like a regular meeting, the minutes, and a check paid for this month? Any questions? I accept the motion for approval.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second. Any discussion? Then moved and seconded. Hearing none. Although, because this contains funds, I will ask a roll call vote. Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Hopkins?
Yes.
Mrs. Nixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Truesdale?
Yes.
Mrs. Connolly?
Yes.
And Mr. Hollins votes yes. Motion carries. Moving on. Number seven, correspondence. We have a correspondence, right place, and right place newsletter. Any questions? Hearing none. And also, the community building development team's minutes from their past meetings, the National Park Service letter. I think they will speak to that at the upcoming, the North Kent Trail map, and Trail Town checklist. Those will be, Mr. Navy will addressing that on the next item.
I would just like to say, Mr. Mayor, that that's very exciting, that that entire portion on the North County Trail is happening and coming through our town. That's just very exciting to me.
That is. Number eight, unfinished building, business. Item A, community building development team proposal. Mr. Navy, would you kindly speak about it to Mr. Mayor?
Whoever.
Yes, okay. Come on up, Mr. Navy.
Hi, I'm Kurt Navy, Chair for the Community Building Development Team. Just a few things. First off, we've got some people coming at you in April and May as we gather, A, the site plan for that area up there with the library and the walking trail that the DDA's working on, and the rain garden area with some sculptures and the amphitheater that we're working on. That should be done here, or I see they're doing a surveying up there, I think, yesterday on that to get elevations and quick connect depth and that kind of stuff on there. So, Dwayne McIntyre, who's kind of point man for us, figures we'll have a site plan about first of April, so when we come in, we'll have the site plan for you guys, and we'll be ready to rock and roll on that side also. MCT, North Country Trail, voted here just recently and did approve the trail coming through Cedar Springs two nights ago, clearly. We met with Solon Township, a very warm welcome from them to, they've asked us to come back next week when they work with their parks side of it, but very interested in that trail coming out through them and very open to that aspect of things, so that's very, very nice. That's going to be a real plus. Like I said, from people I talk to, the first comments are, "That's going to open the door for grants for us," so, and that means Cedar Springs, not for our group, so... We just purchased the Coxon property. We signed two weeks ago, yesterday, on that one, so that is now in our fold. The property butts up against Pine Street and comes out to Fitz Street also. Last month, the community building development team received a gift of $170,000. That puts us up to 600 and...
Fifty cents.
Fifty-six thousand dollars so far, and we haven't asked anybody for any money yet, so just to show what we're doing here. Amphitheaters moving right along. We're excited about that. Thad, thank you to you, by the way. He's given us some sites and whatnot for Tom Holloway to go to, some really nice-looking stuff. We're going to be excited to bring that to you guys. We're looking at Tom Holloway's marching orders are, how much they're going to cost us, and what's the easiest upkeep and maintenance of this facility for us as a community, so... But anyways, coming in next month, we'll have a rain garden side of it with the sculptures that they're working on for that area. We're working on an artist rendition of what the rain gardens will work, look like also, because I don't know about you guys, but I'll talk to my wife about prints, and she doesn't know, so I saw her picture, and she goes, "Okay, now we got it all on the same page." So, we'll have that, and then plus the amphitheater, so got a lot of stuff coming, coming in towards us real fast on things here. Any questions?
Sounds busy.
Yeah, we're moving right along. I'm at a real nice pace.
Yeah, the old trail system, I believe years ago, way when, that used to come up through here from Lowell in that area up through the old river grades and up in that cross, so that has been earmarked years ago as a national trail system.
Yeah.
So, it's just now it's coming to, which is great.
Yeah, and the National Trail, they're going to tie that into, I think this fall, I thought that they said, they're going to tie this North Country Trail into the Appalachian Trail on top of it all.
Yeah, that's the big intersection and...
Yeah, and Tom Anderson, his daughter Amy came the other night out there, and they've got pictures. They've hiked the New Waco part of it, and that's gorgeous. When we came back across in December, we started over by Howard Christian Nature Center, come down through the hardwoods, walking between the huckleberry swamps and out and across and picked up Duke Creek out over to, got onto Sherwin at Old Lakes, or this drop dead gorgeous. Holy Cracker Jacks, man. It's something, and for us to be able to bring that coming through Cedar is going to be really nice, so we're excited about that. Like I said, it opens a lot of possibilities for, for Cedar, so...
You know, thank all the people that have put this hard work, and Ms. Hollins is here. She has done a lot of work. There's been a lot of people involved, and it's truly appreciated.
Very good thing.
Mr. Mayor? Oh? Well, I have two donations.
I have a question. Last month, you spoke that the community development team may have some interest in the property as well at 174 Pine. I just, was it, am I correct?
Hmm, yeah.
That is, that is the property that we were...
Looking at, building the house on.
Yes.
Yeah.
I wondered if you had any more concrete ideas of what they had wanted that for...
Um, our viewpoint upon it is, are we following the master plan?
Okay.
That's, that's all that I wanted. You know what I'm saying? I find, the house we're building up here on Maple and Second Street is a nice looking house.
Okay.
My question is, and has been, I had conversations with Thad on it, you know, I don't have an issue, neither does our group on anything. I just want to make sure that our master plan is being followed, that we've got a good balance of things going on in Cedar Springs. One of the things we bounce around is, do we put this house there, or do we take a look at, you know, senior housing, you know, no-stuff residences, you know, because we don't have that in the downtown area, and that's one of the things the master plan calls for. So, that's, you know, we're okay either way on that side, but we just, we just want to make sure that we're following the master plan and that, you know, everybody's on the same page here. We're going towards that one north star and not six north stars.
Sure. Okay. So, just to clarify, you don't need that piece of property...
On Pine Street?
...for part of the community development?
Yeah, I don't need, we don't, we do not need that piece of property on Pine Street.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor? Kurt, I want to clarify, too, now, when you say you don't need the property on Main Street...
On Pine Street?
On Pine Street. You need the connection it makes to the creek back deeper.
The one on Fifth Street?
Yeah.
Yeah, what is that, 116, right?
Yeah.
Lot 116? Yes, because what we, what we're going to propose to do is a couple of things. Working with creative technologies, one thing, let me back up, slow down. One of the things that we are proposing to do, because there's monies available, having come from the world of education, for anything with collaboration. So, we're talking to CTA and have been working in conjunction with CTA right from the beginning, and we want, working with Cedar Springs Public Schools, on what can we do on collaboration? Well, one of the parts of it is, as we're building things, and one of the things down the line is a gymnasium, rec center, is that CTA would be interested in using those facilities. And so, we're going, we want to have some bridges across in this area, and one would be going out towards CTA right alongside CS Manufacturing. That ridge would take them right down away from traffic and right into their playground area, and we'd come across the creek, and we're proposing, you know, a couple more bridges for people to travel back and forth and enjoy it, the park area, da-da-da-da, the spring or springs, wherever we have, that type of stuff. So, that piece on Fifth Street would be beneficial to our group because that would allow that access across the stream with a nice decorative bridge and leading out towards CTA, and also, that's how we view the North Country Trail exiting Cedar Springs, is right down that way, across, and we're off the roads and out paths and through CTA, and then on out through, basically, the gravel pit on Wismas where we're going to come across in there, so...
Mr. Mayor, one more quick question. In our description of what you were going to present, it says that you were going to present a first draft of the site plan and a proposal for a rain garden. I'm assuming that you aren't going to get that...
Not going to get that thing because the site plan's not ready to go.
Okay.
We've been talking to Robert Andrus, and he's our architect. We're working with out of, down here on 14 Mile Road and Northland Drive, and because of the ice we had on the creek, they weren't able to get in there and take the elevations of the creek. And so, like I said, yesterday, I see they're out there, I saw the transit stuff set up out on the property, so...
Mother Nature, what do you do?
What's that?
Mother Nature.
Mother Nature, dog. I thought, "Wusses, get up there and wait around," you know? Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask more?
I'm glad that Mrs. Nixon opened this conversation. Would you care to enlighten us? You're talking about senior housing, the possibility of senior housing maybe along Pine Street, which would back up to all that's being developed?
Yes, well, in review, though, in review here, however long it will, I'll lose track of time, of the, of the master plan and what is calling for, and like I said, great plan. I just, I love the direction. It talks about housing for low-income apartments, that kind of stuff, you know, which we've been doing. It also calls for senior housing within walking distance of downtown. And I look around and I say, "Okay, what's the balance do we have here? Do we have that aspect of things, or are we asking, you know, some of this is self-serving? I'm getting older, and pretty soon, you know, where are we going to, you know, last thing is Cedar Springs, where do we stay at? Does that make sense?" And so, the question becomes, is it more viable to continue that route? What's, where's the balance of the scales at on this side? You know, and, and so, do we say, "Okay, let's continue on," and like I said, the house on Second Street and Maple Street's a very nice house, very nice looking, nice big square building there. But, or do we take a look at moving down? So, I approached Wolf Construction and said, "Will you guys think about this? What do you think?" And I approached Dwayne McIntyre, said, "What do you think on this side of it?" And their response are, "It'd be good spots for it, because there's that lot plus our lot, we could get a couple different units in there." Dwayne's looked it over, saying, "Do we have the depth to do it?" And he says, "Yes, we do." Dwayne has shown an interest of taking that project on, if that was the case. Also, I know Kurt Becker's place is for sale, so, you know, we have space to do some things there, and once again, it would back right up against this heart of the city that we're going to be working on, so...
Thank you. A lot of good things.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask a question? Mr. Manager?
You want to?
You were saying that you didn't think that the lot on Fifth Street was very buildable? Just to clarify.
There's some question whether we could put residential...
Okay. So, when we're talking about the backing up, I mean, that would make even more sense if we aren't sure we can even put a building on. Okay. Just clarifying that I had the spots correct in my head.
The other thing that we would like to do, in our vision, is coming down from CTA, they've got a pond up there someplace, and there's a drainage that comes down across country, and empties in the Cedar Creek right there. That's what we would like to take our next step to for a rain garden and educational learning center. So, we'd have the one by the fountain and have that one there, and then you come on down the line, and we have one at the corner of Fifth and Cherry Street, and then we just continue on down the line with these learning spots that Perry and Tom are working on as far as with Trunks Unlimited, plants and that kind of stuff. We've called upon Perry and Tom because of their knowledge, vast knowledge of plants and native plants and variations that we have. So, each one of our rain gardens is going to have a variation, so it'll be a learning center that we can work in conjunction with the schools for that collaborative learning because there's monies available out there for collaboration.
That's exciting.
One with the wetland parts, too.
What's that?
One with the wetland parts, too, and we'll help them utilize that for insects and different frogs and old stuff that kids don't get that opportunity in town.
So, exciting.
I have one more thing, and I apologize for being bumbling, but it's pertinent to something that's coming up later.
Okay.
So...
Well, go ahead.
So, the, what I'm, the crux that I'm trying to get to for this 174 Pine...
Yep.
Is that I also looked at the master plan, and you're correct, it's medium, it's, the plan is medium-sized city housing.
Yep.
I'm not opposed to that, but I have a man with plan for that property to bring income to the city and to not make that our responsibility for maintaining anymore. If I had another man with another plan, who I knew was going to execute it, I may be, I would be very inclined to look at his plan. I'm asking, are you the man with plan? Are you, are you the man that's going to say, "This is going to happen"? Because right now, I have someone else who says, "This is how I can make it happen for you."
And to answer your question, I've gone as far as I can go with it. All I can, I'm sorry, all I can ever think of is Dilbert, the man with the plan. But anyways, to answer your question, I've done my research with people that are builders in the area and, and talking to Dwayne. Dwayne has trust and interest in pursuing that side of that. Does that make sense? That's as far as we've gone. That decision really basically comes back to city council to weigh, are we doing the master plan, and is it being done evenly? And that's got to be your call. Does that make sense? Am I a man with a plan? I got all kinds of plans.
Okay.
All right? Does that make sense, Molly? That's not my, that's not my call. That's, that's a city call.
Well, just to follow up, is there another person coming before us with a plan? I mean, the city can't call at something with...
Oh, and answer, and answer your question, not tonight.
No.
Dwayne's unable to attend.
Dwayne's under the weather over there.
Okay.
Okay? All right?
Thank you very much.
Anything else?
Happy birthday. Thanks for all the exciting... Happy birthday.
Oh, thank you.
Oh, did you hear that?[1659.41]
That's not my, that's not my call, that's, that's a city call.
But just to follow up, is there another person coming before us with a plan? I mean, the city can't.
Oh, and answer your, and answer your question, um, not tonight.
No.
Duane's unable to attend.
Duane's under the weather over there.
Okay.
Okay? All right?
Thank you very much.
Thank you guys.
Thanks for all the exciting information.
Happy birthday.
Oh, thank you.
Oh, did you hear that?
Come on, I'm awesome.
Okay, moving on to item eight, unfinished business, we're still in there, item B. Mr. Manager?
Yes, uh, this is the discussion about 174 Pine Street and, uh, possibly having InterCity Christian Federation secure that property from the city. At the last meeting, council discussed the possible sale or donation of the city property of Pine Street to InterCity Christian Federation. At the end, council tabled the matter and asked to bring back information on what kind of property tax we might realize if it was back on the rolls. So using the, a factor of a hundred thousand dollars home, the net results for all taxing units would be $2,290, of which 900 would come to the city. 600 would go to Kent County, 420 to Cedar Springs Public Schools, Intermedia School District, uh, three twenty, or 235, Grand Rapids Community Council's 90 and the library 45. Uh, as Kurt mentioned, I did discuss with him about their need for 174. He said, really for their needs, 174, uh, if they got 116 Fifth Street, it would be the same thing. And 116 Fifth Street is probably the least desirable for a residential building site, because there's some questions of whether a home could be built there. Uh, and if it wasn't, it'd take a lot of preparation. And 116 Fifth Street would be adjacent to property they already own and help that with that connectivity and access out of Fifth Street. Uh, talked this morning with Representative, uh, ICCF and our property is assessed at 10,000 or two times value of 20,000. Uh, 20,000 is out of their, their, uh, reach, they could do 10,000 or certainly, uh, as council would, would like, they would accept it as a donation. They're in a, kind of a time sensitive issue, because, you know, they've got to, they've got to make decisions on where they're going to go with the, with a project. And they certainly, uh, like the city of Cedar Springs, they've done work here before and they can't give the results. And, uh, from my perspective, they've been a great community partner. So my recommendation to the council is that they allow, uh, ICCF to acquire the city property on Pine Street, either at a, uh, a payment of $10,000 or a donation.
This is the will of the council.
I would never vote on that right now.
It's on agenda, we need a motion for discussion.
I have just one question.
Wait, we need a motion to discuss.
I would like to make a motion.
Okay, then move. Okay, now we're up for discussion.
Do you, do you want to specify motion? I would like to make a motion to donate the property located at 174 Pine Street to the InterCity Christian Federation.
Do you support or agree to that?
I'd support it.
Okay, no, discussion, then go ahead, sir.
Okay, um, well, I guess I'm, I'm just here to answer any questions. My name's John Whitmer, I'm from the InterCity Christian Federation. Um, me and my colleague, J M Vanderwork, did a, a really good job presenting, um, you know, our situation, um, our reputation in developing affordable housing, um, all around Kent County. So, uh, you know, we would, we really appreciate, uh, donation. We do have room in our budget, in our development, uh, budget to pay for the lot. But any donation would just be put back into a better product for eventual home.
In your, your funding formula, do you have the financials to do the water and sewer connections?
Yes.
Now, that, if my memory is certainly correct, that sewer is shallow there, so there couldn't be service to the basement.
Okay.
When there was a water and sewer there.
Our, our plans are to have an egress window, um, down there for any future development, but we wouldn't ourselves put any, you know, bathroom or stuff down there. It's going to be up to the future homeowner.
Thank you.
So I guess some of the financing you say depends on the floodplain and so suppose you got in there and that your financing wouldn't go because you're in the wrong floodplain, then what?
Right, well, I guess we've, we've done our due diligence on it already and we've cleared all those.
So it's going to go?
Obstacles, yes.
Do you build barrier free homes for folks?
We, we could, yeah, we have the capabilities to do that if we had, um, a buyer that required barrier free access to the house.
Is that something that we could request as, as like a requirement of our donation?
Um, that's a good question. I suppose that's, that's up to you.
I don't know if that's an unfair burden to you to get on my.
Well, if it would solve the issue of trying to provide more housing for elderly or disabled, I mean, if that's, again, if we're having that master plan, that would be a way of meeting that threshold. And if we're, if we're donating the property as opposed to targeting the $10,000.
Mr. Mayor? I just wondered if there was a donation and I don't know if there's any increased costs associated with a barrier free inspection?
There would be, but I, I can't comment on, you know, what percentage increase that, but it would be.
If it was a donation and if you had the money, you know, up to $10,000, is that would cover the additional cost for barrier free?
Probably, yeah. Yeah, we do have, the, the concept of the house that we're, we're thinking about has an open floor plan, um, on the, on the ground floor, but it would be a two-story house, um, that we propose there, so.
And that would be, the two-story would be because of the narrowness of the lot to get your square footage?
No, it, it's more so to just fit the, the surrounding houses, the character of the neighborhood there.
I believe Mr. Clark? Yes, uh, first a question to maybe Tom, Pat or Jerry, whoever knows the answer here. This is, this is a double lot, right? Are we talking about building one house on both lots? Am I clear on that?
My previous discussions, they did build a double lot. And I, I, I brought it up to them, it was a double lot and they considered building two homes, you know, on two lots.
Right.
And they said, they didn't like that idea because the character of that neighborhood is larger lots. So they wanted to make it look like the rest of the neighborhood and fit in.
So that's still the idea, one house on both lots?
That is, yeah.
Okay. Just knowing the area, the log table is quite high there.
Right, yep, yep.
So, you know. The, it fits the lot and I'm thinking it is, the city inherited that about 40 years ago. A gentleman passed away and the father donated it to the city to tear down and clean up. There was an old wrecked, wrecked house there.
So you're then maintaining, owning and maintaining that lot for forty years though?
Lot of it.
Yeah.
Push room thirty plus.
Yes. I talked to you, I didn't realize it was two, it's two lots. Actually, it seems like that, uh, two residents would be better. I don't know why we're thinking that we have to keep the, the appearance, uh, like that that's been there for years. I mean, that's going to go away, something new. Maybe it's time to start something new and fresh with, uh, two houses, one on each lot. I would be more in favor of that than just one house.
I guess that would just, I don't know if they have the financial will of all the people too.
We, we don't, we actually just closed.
If I may, I think there's some confusion about two lots, it's only one lot. It's a large lot, but it's only one lot.
Thank you. What is the measurements?
132 by 132.
Yes, one part, one part. But isn't that two lots? I'm sorry, jumping in here. I thought a lot was 66 by 132. Depending on how it was platted, way then. Okay, I, I see what you're saying, Tom. Okay.
I'm sorry, I lost my train of thought there.
That's all right. Um, it's basically now we're, we're looking at one large lot, this one is 132, 132.
Right.
The original plating, that's how it was put out, so.
But I think the, the city manager was explaining that you don't have the funding, so.
Right, right. We, we just closed today on 217 Cedar and we're going to start construction on that really soon. And we'd have funding to do two houses. So that, that takes care of one and we only have funding remaining for another single one, one house.
Thank you. So, Mr. Mayor, I, I'm not sure if we need to keep John standing up here all this time, but I, I was going to hold up talking a little bit further about the, the master plan and senior housing possibilities along there. But if we're going to vote up or down right now, do we need, is it okay to bring this conversation in here? Well, we're, we're basically, the motion at hand is this lot. I understand, but that's what I'm saying, if the discussion about another possible use for that property is in play, we need to have a discussion about that before we make a decision about whether or not we're going to, to have this organization do the building there. I agree. Go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, I, I don't know that the, the, I don't think the master plan calls specifically for senior housing in that location.
No.
And it is, you know, it is a residential area and, you know, my knowledge, no one else has any other plans in place, ready to go other than ICCF.
Well, the master plan is up to be rewritten next year, but, you know. Joe, it's up to you, sir, do you want me to do kind of, is that what I think about the master plan at this point? Or should we? Well, we, I guess mine is, um, make it quick, we, we don't waste a lot of time. Uh, in the master plan, it speaks about, um, possible changes to the zoning in certain areas of the town. Uh, I'll just read this one sentence, it says, "The city should also plan to accommodate a senior living complex in what they call the mixed-use area downtown." Unfortunately, from what I could see on the zoning map, they had not accommodated for a mixed-use area. But to clarify that, perhaps, the next page talks a little bit about that and I'll try to keep it brief. Uh, it talks about mixed use. I'm sorry, I'm going to, I'm going to read that, well, if I read the whole pair of that, I'll lose everybody. It's probably two or three sentences here. Okay, therefore, this plan proposes amending the zoning ordinance to rezone those areas. Listen, west, west of the White Pine Trail, back to their original zoning of residential or industrial. Now, that's west, okay? Now, what do they say about the other side? They say, "The remaining mixed-use area sandwiched between the White Pine Trail and the, uh, what do they call it, the CBD, help me there, Perry?" Central Business District, which for what this, the, uh, community building team is doing, the library, the amphitheater, the gym, whatever else we're looking at, I think would be considered that business area, the brewery. Then that, they say, should be a transitioning, it's a transition between the downtown residential and industrial uses. So if I'm, if I'm reading that clearly, and again, somebody from the planning commission probably needs to help me, but. It sounds like that east of the trail, they want this mixed use, or they're suggesting that we have that mixed use and that would fit into this area there.
We do have a mixed use zone in the city. It doesn't extend to Pine Street and it's well south of that and it's, uh, it's kind of straddles, as I recall, straddles the trail, but farther down. So it's not, it's not close to, to Pine Street at all. And I think, uh, John's is probably with not mixed use, so it's not, it's not close. But we do have a mixed use very good zone.
Okay, coming, so coming back to this first part where they said, suggest that the city should also plan to accommodate a senior living complex in a mixed-use area. If we put it down that far south, seniors are probably going to have a really hard time getting up to the central business district if they don't have some kind of carts or something. So if we moved it up along Pine Street or another way even, that would be, you know, closer and more accommodating to those folks. Just something to look at, I just don't know, I feel like I'm not ready to make a decision and I know you guys need us to make a decision if you're going to do the.
Very helpful.
If, if I may.
One more time, have you done, Mr. Clark?
You know, I, and, and one thing, one reason that I tried to pin Mr. Maybe Down on this is because if there was someone that was willing to come in and, and build this medium density property there, that would be great. But right now, the city is maintaining this lot and we're not getting any revenue back. If this gentleman and his corporation, I, corporation, that's the wrong word.
Organization.
Organization, thank you, um, come in and build this house, well, okay, the city realizes $600 a year plus whatever, you know, little bit we were paying to maintain it. And so in 20 years, which is not very old for a house, we will have seen back our entire donation. And, and that's not counting what's going to go to the county or whatever. And then the people who live there are going to inevitably go to Westone and spend money. They're going to, you know, maybe shop our downtown businesses, they're going to go out to the new Farm and Home Store. So this is, this is a net financial gain. If there was someone else with a plan here tonight, I'm all ears, but right now there isn't.
Mr. Mayor? Okay. You know, we, we need to move on with this, go ahead. I'm not ready to vote. Um, Mayor? Yep, go ahead. Um, and I, I agree that it would be great to start getting income. It doesn't mean though, that if we hold off on not building, uh, in this way, that we won't get income, that this property wouldn't be developed, although it doesn't seem as immediate, you're correct. And it's one of the beauties and the anxieties of having a city master plan. When you're trying to accommodate that plan, sometimes you don't do the immediate thing because it messes up the master plan. So I, I don't know, at this point, I, I really do, and I think you need more information to make the best, uh, informed decision about not only giving us immediate income or somewhat immediate income, but also trying to follow along with the master plan. And I know that, um, one of the builders that is looking at that has already built similar, uh, called, um, they're not really, they're more of like apartments, duplexes, whatever, very close to this area. And he's shown a great deal of interest in doing this along this area. So, and knowing this person and he's serious, that's, I'm, I still think I would like to hear what he has to say.
Mr. Mayor, just a comment of a, a good. Mixed use, if we tried to extend it up to Pine Street, that would be in effect spot zoning, that's illegal. Number two, the lot is, uh, as I recall, is owned in single, single family residential. So to do anything, you know, along the lines of condos would require zoning.
But that could be done.
That, that could be done.
That's a step.
And so I just want to, you know, we do have the mixed use. If we tried to extend it up there, it's not contiguous to any other mixed use. It would be spot zoning, which you're not allowed to do. And then plus you would have to try to get it rezoned to multifamily in a entirely single family residential area.
Mr. Mayor, can I put my two cents in?
My as well.
I, uh, my two cents is on with Dan on this. I, uh, I want to see more of the master plan being followed through. Uh, yes, we're, we're gambling on, we've got a hundred thousand dollar house plan going on now. But is that guaranteed that it's going to be sold? Is it guaranteed that them people are going to live there and pay them taxes? Even after they buy, who's to say something's not going to happen? So in a sense, that's a gamble too. I think we have a better game on following through with the master plan and having a senior home or something there that's going to have more than one individual living there that may be shopping here in town and maybe paying for more things in our community. And again, it's following through with the master plan. We're not going to keep up with the master plan while I have one.
Okay. Mr. Mayor?
I envision this, the same thing, you know, that backing up to a park setting that the Development Committee, uh, has plans, you know, to beautify and all that. I, you know, I have nothing against this gentleman here. I mean, my, my heart is divided on this, but my real feeling is that we're probably jumping ahead of things here, even though that I'd like to see him have it. I also would like to see what a, a more grandeur type of, that'll get some senior housing for. Uh-oh. My license plate.
Everyone's kind of had their piece? May I ask one more question? Does anybody know how many houses, single houses, hot single dwelling houses are available for sale right now in Cedar Springs?
I actually checked on GRAR today.
Yes.
And I saw one in the city limits. Now, that, not say there aren't more, but that was the one posted on Grand Rapids Association of Writers.
Okay, okay, I've got to believe there's more than that, but, uh, and I know in the surrounding area, there are a lot, but, uh, thank you, that, that's helpful. Any other discussion before I call for the vote? Hearing none, seeing as all this pertains to funding and everything, I'll do a roll call. Mr. Truesdale? No. Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Mrs. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
No.
Mr. Clark?
No.
Mrs. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Hall votes no. Motion is defeated.
Motion is defeated. Thank you. Moving on. Okay, we have to be aware of that. Okay, discussion regarding a draft policy proposal along the action on agenda items. Who is it to speak to that? Go ahead, Mr. Clark.
We started this discussion probably two meetings ago, I think, at least, nicknamed the Ronnie Merlinton Policy, and, um, basically what it asks for is on certain agenda items that could cause more, need more discussion, cause controversy, uh, for whatever reason...
Change the course of what we do.
Monetary things, the big items, uh, that we, we not only talk about them in the meeting that they're presented, but that we discuss them in that meeting, and then we bring them back to a later meeting at least one time for further discussion before we take action on them. And so that's the heart of the Ronnie Merlinton Policy, and I apologize to you, council members, members, if you tried to wade through all of the stuff that I put in there, but I did that because I, I felt like it was important at this point for us to understand how we arrived at those agenda items and the types of agenda items that we do cover already. We may later want to add other things, when we decide we wanna subtract things, and it gives us a foundation to work from, so, um, there you have it.
And I, I would just like to note, Mr. Mayor, if that's all right?
Go ahead.
Um, I worked with Councilor Clark on this, on some level, although he did far more of the work on this item, in any way I want to take the credit that he put in, but, um, he really went through an entire stack, a year, of minutes of what we have done on council. I shouldn't say me, because I've only been on here since November of this last go-around, but, um, and looked at what is the work that we do, and tried to put that into categories. So, that's what you're looking at, is taking what we've done previously and putting it into the categories of things that would be consent agenda items, the things that might require further investigation and discussion, and that can be a work in progress, we're very open to changing those categories, adding categories, deleting categories. This was our first best, maybe not first, second or third best shot to try to get this organized in a way that makes sense.
Okay, I'm sure this is a working, uh, drilling, uh, policy that can be modified and changed.
We, we also put in a caveat that in the event that there was something that required immediate action, that there is an override, and it can be done by a supermajority vote of council to override the policy.
Otherwise, add it at the beginning of the workshop.
Correct.
Mm-hmm.
It could even be added at the agenda if we know that it's something that's time-sensitive, something urgent that happens, something critical that needs an immediate, like, we used an example that we have policies, like, we have a purchasing policy, that we require three bids, and that the managers, an example, can make purchases that are under five hundred dollars without the council's approval, but in the event of an emergent situation, we have the ability for the manager to override that.
Okay.
This would be the same kind of thing. In the event, um, event of a emergent situation, we have this policy that can be overridden with a supermajority vote.
Okay, any other comments, discussion? Okay, I guess we'll, uh, next month, we'll see what happens or what.
I'd ask that we put it on the agenda to vote on next month. If there's additional discussion or concern or things that council members would like to suggest, um...
It needs to be addressed to the individuals immediately.
Yeah, council, council, tell us so that we can, we can fix it.
Okay. Hearing unvote, so we'll move that next month.
Okay.
IMD, Mayor of Business Matters, I have none, I have some vacancies, I'm working on them right as day. New business, item A.
Yes, we're, uh, delighted to have Mr. Victor Hansen here tonight, he's the president of Display Pack, asking him to come and introduce himself and his business and tell the council and the community what his plan is, so far, so far.
Yeah, very nice article in the Post today, yes.
I just noticed that on myself, oh, so, hey, cool. Um, I'm Victor Hansen, um, nice to meet everybody here. It's been a long time, I've been waiting for this day to happen, um, to be able to just go public about the plans and, I'm really excited at this point. Display Pack was founded by my father in nineteen sixty-seven, a small, single-stall garage in Rockford, um, and, uh, we've been fortunate enough to grow through the economy, even though there's been some pretty tough times. Uh, we're at the point now, our current facility that we just sold, Downtown Grand Rapids, it's a hundred-year-old warehouse, it's quite large, it's five stories, and it's very difficult to be profitable in manufacturing when you're moving freight up and down, um, but the better is, other than the inefficiencies, is that we're growing. Uh, we've outgrown the facility, um, and we're, we're just deciding ourselves what we're gonna do between now and when we can actually get our feet in the facility. Uh, what we do is we're a two-fold company, one, we deal in retail packaging, I just brought a couple samples here to show you guys, um, it could be, uh, a sample like this if you're gonna go by a cell phone or an AT&amp;T, um, we have a patented line called the Accessible Pack, 'cause everybody hates the packages you can't get open. So, we patented this, you can just pop it open, you can try your case, if you don't like it, you just close it.
Wow.
So, it's very...
You're the guys that do that.
I almost wanted to give a standing ovation for that.
This is the newest...
Is that a package engineering thing?
Yes. We have one, I'm with two people.
I bet you do.
Um, another one for Shot Soup, they just hit the market, and, uh, you just open it up, you try your case, if you don't wanna buy it, or if you do, you just close it. So, it's very environmentally friendly, the pieces of plastic paper can pull right apart without cross-contamination for recycling. Um, so, the business involves printing, thermal forming of the plastic, and then at times they actually do the fulfillment, where the customer sends us their product and we actually put it together. We're doing a lot of work with Kraft right now on Jell-O bowls, uh, for, for the Jell-O jars, uh, those kind of trays. This is going like crazy, they, they just ordered two-point-four million of the Minion trays, and another, another three million of the new Star Wars trays, and so this is, yeah, this is great. And if anybody out here is a state fan or a, a, you know, a fan that can believe these with you, um, these are for Jell-O treats, um, some people call them Jell-O shots, but Jell-O treats.
The Minion tray is more of a heater.
We do also have, I did bring samples, I totally forgot, an automotive line, if you have a car that has wood grain trim inside it, um, we, we produce that wood grain trim. It's a very thin plastic, and then we sell to injection molders and they put that in the mold and it comes out as bigger parts. We always manufacture that in the entire world, we started doing that in nineteen seventy-eight, and, uh, we're, that division is gonna grow about thirty percent in two thousand fifteen. Uh, our plastic division for packaging has grown eighty-five percent in the last three years, uh, so we're really excited to come. Uh, our two thousand and fourteen average head count was two hundred and twenty-five people working at our facility. We've done the demographics, and whenever you decide to move a facility, some people will be happy where it goes and some people won't. Um, we've estimated that at least twenty of the full-time employees, maybe thirty, won't make the move, so those will be immediate hires that we have to do. Um, and we've been holding the bar on hiring them to temporary employees because so many of them take, uh, Grotta, or they're dropped off, they're so, they walk or take a bike, and we didn't really think it was right to hire them just to, you know, have them not be able to make the move. So, right now, we're carrying anytime, you know, maybe a low of fifty, a high of a hundred temporary employees, and probably, I'd say, about fifty of those will probably be immediate hires once we come up here as well. So, you could see, you know, as many as, um, eighty new immediate jobs, but ongoing will be probably two-twenty-five as it stands today, and then as we grow through there. So, we're excited, um, it's been a long time. I just look in my emails, it's November seven, two thousand thirteen, when I first heard rumors that like...